On the phone, Brandon.
I keep on the phone. And it's six o'clock.
All right, well, let's get this, go ahead and get this started. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you fellow councilpeople for showing up this evening. We'll go ahead and call to order the City of Kennedy, Texas Special City Council Meeting scheduled for today, August twenty fifth, twenty twenty, six P M. Amanda, we do have a corner present from what I understand. Can you please call roll?
Counselor Breones.
Present.
Counselor Lynn.
Here.
Counselor Sine.
Counselor Sine.
Here.
Counselor Conno.
Here.
Counselor Meyer.
Here.
All present.
Hey, Leslie, can you please say the prayer tonight?
Oh, Heavenly Father, we thank you for this time. We thank you for the grace that you've shown for this, for the exit and for our community. We ask that you would be with us today and allow us to take care of the business of running our city and doing the things that we need to do to continue moving forward. We ask your wisdom and guidance. In your son's name we pray.
Amen.
Amanda, were there any public comments that were put in tonight?
Yes, I do have one.
Okay.
Okay, it reads, "The Mayor pro tem and members of the City Council. My name is Joe Baker and I am a resident of Kennedy. Please consider making an effort to find a way to faithfully return to hosting face-to-face City Council meetings. I believe there is a way to faithfully hold these meetings in the city auditorium, which has ample space for social distancing. While I appreciate the city's efforts to place the safety of all residents above all else, I think there is a price being paid for these telephonic meetings. And part of the price is what appears to be the suppression of public participation. Also, the communication is not clear and it's critically important that, and it is critically important that this communication be as clear as possible for all involved. As we approach the budget cycle, it is especially important for the public to be heard and whatever the city can do to allow for this will be greatly appreciated. Thank you for taking the time to listen to the comments and thank you all for showing such patience and good teamwork during the most recent meetings." And that is all, sir.
Amanda. Hello? Okay. Item number four. Can y'all hear me? Yes.
Brandon.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not feeling well. I'm gonna try to hang on as long as I can, but if I have to hang up, oh, okay.
Okay, thanks, Brenda. Thank you very much. Move, moving on to item number four. Consideration and possible action in regard to Resolution twenty dash twenty-one. A resolution of the City of Kennedy, Texas, establishing the boundaries of the historic downtown commercial district of the city for purposes of applying the financial assistance from the Texas Department of Agriculture's Texas Capital Fund Downtime Revitalization Program.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion when you consider Agenda Item Number Four.
Motion by Justin.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Leslie, discussion. Do you have a presentation for this?
Cindy Metro.
Cindy, yeah.
I'm on the line if you have any questions. This just establishes the boundary. Is it okay for me to speak? I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead, Cindy, go ahead, go ahead, speak.
Okay, this just establishes the boundaries of the, the host historic district for, um, we're looking to do the, the sidewalks. And so you have to have a historic district and then that project area must be within the boundaries of that historic district. That's what this is. Are there any questions for me?
No, ma'am.
This is part, this is part of the grant process, correct?
Yes, sir.
So this is just a formality.
Yes, and, and it can be changed, uh, by council anytime.
Well, if the council doesn't have any other questions, to keep this, uh, grant process moving, I'll make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Number Four.
Motion by Justin.
I'll second that.
Second by Leslie.
And I'll second that.
Second by Leslie. Any other discussion?
Yes, Council, City Manager.
You go ahead.
Uh, I would just like to advise the City Council, uh, that since the mayor did not show up for this meeting, um, the City Council in their motions on these resolutions and that will need to authorize the mayor pro tem to sign these documents.
Okay, I'll update my motion to include that we have, uh, Brandon Breones, the mayor pro tem, him, uh, execute this resolution and any other associated documents.
Got a motion by Justin.
And I'll still second that.
Still second by Leslie. Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, Amanda, please call roll.
Counselor Breones.
Yeah.
Counselor Lynn.
Yeah.
Counselor Sine.
Yes.
Counselor Conno.
Yes.
Counselor Meyer.
Yes.
All in favor.
Motion passes. Item number five, consideration and possible action in regard to Resolution twenty dash twenty-two, a resolution of the City of Kennedy, Texas, finding the conditions exist within the designated historic downtown commercial district of the city which are detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community and therefore are declared to constitute a slum blighted area.
Make a motion that we consider Item Five for on the agenda.
Second by, second by Justin, discussion. Do you have a presentation for Item Number Five?
Yes, Ms. Metro, would you like to have a floor?
Yes. Sure, um, this is part of the national objective. So part of that is the elimination of slum and blight in that downtown area because that's what they're trying to do is create economic development opportunities. So we have to declare part of, uh, we have to declare that area as that there are conditions in the area that would qualify as slum blight, like on Second Street, those broken cracked sidewalks, things like that that need to be repaired. So those are definitely blighted.
And again, this is just a formality.
Yes, it is, it is, mhm, it's part of the grant, yes, sir.
So then, if, I'll make a motion on this again, uh, to approve Agenda Item Number Five and have the mayor pro tem, Brandon Breones, execute the resolution and any other associated documents.
I'll second that. Cindy, I'll second that.
Okay, second by Cindy, you broke away on a side, side, Cindy. Any other discussion? No other discussion, Amanda, please call roll.
Counselor Breones.
Yeah.
Counselor Lynn.
Counselor Lynn.
Yes.
Counselor Sine.
Yes.
Counselor Conno.
Yeah.
Counselor Meyer.
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor.
Motion pass. Item number six, consideration and possible action in regard to Resolution twenty dash twenty-three. The resolution of the City of Kennedy, Texas, authorizing the submission of a Texas Community Development Block Grant Program application to the Texas Department of Agriculture for the Downtown Revitalization Program Fund and authorizing the mayor and or city manager to act as the city's executive off, officer and authorized representative in all matters pertaining to the city's participation in the Texas Community Block Development Block Grant Program. Motion for discussion?
Six on the agenda.
Another motion by Leslie. Second by Justin, discussion. Do you have a presentation for Item Number Six?
Yes, um, this is just the, uh, the resolution authorizing you to submit this application for up to, uh, five hundred thousand dollars and then you do have a match of seventy-five thousand dollars.
And so Cindy, just for the citizens that are listening, um, I know we've talked about this in previous council meetings, but would you mind just giving a little bit more disclosure on what the City of Kennedy is looking at doing? So they understand what that five hundred thousand's going for and then that what that match is gonna represent for Kennedy, just, just a brief summary.
It's sure, um, it, that, that is going for sidewalks, um, and right now we're looking at Second Street. Um, there's a couple of options from Escondido to Live Oak on both sides to repair that. Or we could do, uh, there's another option still on Second Street, so that is the main goal with that. And possible lighting, we might be able to, to work some lighting into the budget as well. So what, that's what we're looking at. So the, the seventy-five thousand is part of the, the city's match, but for all of that, you get construction, you get engineering, and you get the grant administration, so that all works together. Um, and it's, it's a good, it's a, a good bang for your buck type of thing.
Yes, ma'am, and this will also help us get into ADA compliance, correct?
Yes, yes, it will.
Perfect.
The only other question that I have, looking at this agenda item, is we need to, um, find a chief executive officer, either the city manager or the mayor. Um, how does the council feel appointing Mr. Lynn as the chief executive officer for this grant?
If, if we do that, if we do that and, uh, after the election, we can, and we can, can we change that or does that stay after we start?
It, okay, so it does stay, um, that's why we use the term city manager and mayor just in case things change. Um, usually the, the mayor is always an appropriate signer of contract, um, and it just depends from city to city on who you're comfortable with. Uh, you can certainly make a motion to just have the mayor and then maybe Mayor Pro Tem sign it if you, if that's more comfortable for you all. It just depends on what you wanna do. You would have to change, cause I, I did send it in a word format so that that can be changed, but that is, that is council's decision.
I have a question, can you have both of them on there or you have to pick one or the other?
Uh, I, so I would put both on there, that's why we do both, just in case somebody's out for some reason and something has to get signed right away. That way we always have a backup plan.
Okay, so we don't have to have one or the other, we can have both.
That's right, it says and/or, yes, correct. One or the other.
Both is, both is what we'd like to have, that's what I think we should have. That way if the mayor's not available, the city manager can sign it and it keeps on moving.
I agree, exactly.
I, I, I agree, I, I thought we had to pick, I, I didn't see that, I misread the or, so, um, yeah, I'm, I'm, I, I just thought we had to pick one.
Yes, that's, yeah, we tried to put both on there just to make sure if, if the mayor's out or if Mr. Lynn's out, that somebody's there that can sign.
Okay, and in that case, I'm gonna make a motion that we take action in regard to Resolution twenty dash twenty-three. A resolution for the ci, for the City of Kennedy and Texas authorizing the submission of the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program application to the Texas Department of Agriculture for the Downtown Revivali, Revitalization Program Fund and authorizing the mayor and or the city manager to act as the city executive officer and authorized representative in all matters pertaining to the city participating in the Texas Community Developmental Block Grant Program.
I'll second that.
Right, Brenda? Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, Amanda, please call roll.
Counselor Breones.
Yeah.
Counselor Lynn.
Yeah.
Counselor Sine.
Yes.
Counselor Conno.
Yeah.
Counselor Meyer.
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor.
Motion pass. Moon, item number seven, consideration and possible action in regard to Resolution twenty dash twenty-four. A resolution of the City of Kennedy, Texas, authorizing the submission of a Texas Community Development Block Grant Program application to the Texas Department of Agriculture for the fire ambulance and service truck FAST Fund and authorizing the mayor and or city manager to act as the city executive officer and authorized representative in all matters pertaining to the city's participation in the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program. Discussion?
I'll make a, we consider Agenda Item Number Seven.
And then Justin?
I'll second it.
Discussion? Presentation, Cindy?
Um, this is, this is a really good grant, so you put up to half a million dollars and your match is five thousand dollars, so it's worth applying for, uh, it's worth trying to get it, um. The only, the, the only negative is that, um, they're gonna look at the census block data of the fire department. So you might run into, you might not be, um, you might not be awarded just because of that reason. Um, because you have to be low to moderate income in those areas, so that's a little bit of a hitch for us. But it's worth trying for. It doesn't cost you anything to try for it, so I think we should go ahead and try for it even if we don't get it. You know, when, um.
I, I agree, Cindy, and I, I think what Mr. Lynn and I were talking about is, um, I think his idea, which I think is a great idea, is for a fire ladder truck, right?
Yes, sir.
It's a good deal.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, how long will you know before, um, if we got the grant or not? How soon do they let y'all know?
Um, usually we find out in December, it might be a little later this year due to COVID. But last year on both of these grants, the FAST Fund and Downtown Revitalization, we found out in December and contract start dates were in February.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Cindy, this is, I got a question. Where, uh, off of this, where do you see other than that census holding Kennedy back from getting this truck grant?
Um, there, there is a scoring sheet to it as well, and I'm pulling that up as we speak, um. Just a second. Okay, so you have, all right, so, uh, previous funding is twenty points and you have fifteen points, so that's good. Uh, they look at the poverty rate, you have a poverty rate sixteen point three four percent, and that just depends on who all applies. And then they have the per capita income, and your per capita income is twenty-three thousand eight hundred and eighty-six. So it's just gonna depend on who else applies at the same time.
Okay. So it sounds like we have a decent application, um, but we don't have probably the best application that's going in the pot.
That's, that's, I would say that's true, that would be true. Yeah, because, uh, because of the census data, so they're gonna look at that, and they're gonna look at that low income and, uh, Counselor, uh, Myers, we talked about that and with, uh, some other things, so, yeah, that, that could be a little bit of a snafu, but like I said, it's worth applying for, you don't know, you don't throw your hat in the ring, so.
That's true, right, and, and it, and it's only fi, a five thousand dollar match, so I mean, for potentially five hundred thousand dollars in grant monies to get something for the fire department that honestly, uh, really do need, um, I, with that being said, if, I, I'll make the motion that we approve the agenda item as presented, um, and, yeah. And I'll second that.
Don't forget to add. Don't forget to add that, um, that Brandon has to sign it.
On this one, does, uh, does Brain, i- is this one of the and ors? I'm trying to look at my phone as, um.
Yeah, you're right, sorry, I didn't miss it.
No, no, Brenda, I, no problem.
I got, motion by Justin, second by Leslie. Any other discussion? Any other discussion, Amanda, please call roll.
Counselor Breones.
Yeah.
Counselor Lynn. Uncle Will Lynn.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now. Counselor Sine.
Yes.
Counselor Conno.
Yeah.
Counselor Meyer.
Yes.
All in favor.
Motion pass. Item number eight, consideration and possible action in regard to the selection of a grant administrator for administration of the Texas General Land Office Community Block Development Blocks Grant Disaster Recovery Mitigation Program and authorize the city manager to enter, enter a professional services agreement for grant administration with the selected firm. Discussion?
I make a motion to consider Item Eight on the agenda.
Motion by Leslie. I'll second it. Okay, second by Justin, discussion, presentation?
Yes. Uh, this is for the, uh, the General Land Office, uh, Disaster Recovery Mitigation Grant that the, um, county, uh, at one time had had the, uh, conference about that I attended, um, that we talked about. Uh, this is an awesome thing for the City of Kennedy, uh, we've reached out to the county and, uh, the county is, uh, from my understanding eager to partner with Kennedy in some of this, so, uh, that would give us up to six projects. Three we could do by ourselves, three we could do in conjunction with the, uh, county. Uh, so what we gotta do is we gotta select our, our grant administrator again, uh, for this. And, uh, we had two, uh, people respond, uh, we had, uh, Langford and Associates respond and, uh, uh, they were rated and scored and, uh, they received a score of ninety-one point two five. And, uh, then we had CSRS, uh, respond and, uh, they met all the criteria. And, uh, so they received a score of around a hundred, uh, on that. So, uh, so that's what we're doing right now, we're gonna say who we want to be our grant administrator for this particular, uh, GLO grant.
Has CSRS ever done work in the City of Ki, for the City of Kennedy?
Um, I have not seen anything with their names on it, no, sir. Of course, um, on some things, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of a creature of habit, I'd like to, I'd like to stay with the person I know.
And I agree with that, I'm, I'm pretty partial to Langford only because I've worked with Langford for almost three years now with multiple grants. Um, even though on the score sheet they might not have been the highest in scoring, I know their quality of work and I know to the extent that they will do to ensure that they meet all the needs of us. So, with, I'm more partial to Langford, but, but that's just from my past experience with the City of Kennedy and with, um, the county.
Thank you for that sharing, thank you for that sharing, Justin. Um, cause I don't know, you know, I, I haven't dealt with either one, so I really, any input that you guys have to help us make a good decision, I'd really like to hear it because this is a big deal and this is something that can be pretty big for the community and, and make a big difference in a lot of areas. So, the grant, the person that's in charge is gonna have, play a big role in that, so. If you're comfortable with the folks that you say, Justin, cause like I say, you, you've worked with them a whole lot more than I ever have, so if you're comfortable with them, I'm comfortable with them.
Well, it, it, it's, it's not just that, Leslie, no, I've worked with grants with them as little as seventy thousand dollars and we're working on this same exact grant that we're talking about right now with the county, there are grant administrators. Our application's gonna be roughly sixty-seven million dollars in projects. So with that being said, it doesn't matter the size of the grant, they have the administration to make sure we meet all the deadlines, we're crossing off, uh, we're crossing all the Ts, dotting all the Is. I, I just personally know with Langford, um, and I probably, I think where I'm at, about eight grants in with them, since I've been with the county, but they've been with the county longer than I've been with the county. Um, I give them a ten out of ten, to be quite honest.
All right, it sounds good to me.
Yeah, that's. Cindy, is Cindy still on?
Yes, I am.
What kind of project would, would something, uh, come out of this grant? I mean, what, what kind of projects are we talking about? Uh, there's all kinds of projects that can come out of this, I mean, we, you could do a sewer plant, um, as much as, you know, uh, like Justin talked about, uh, into the, the tens and hundreds of millions of dollars. Uh, you could do drainage projects, you could do homes, there's all types of things that you can do with this, um.
Okay.
Hazardous.
Awesome, okay.
And, and, if, so what we're doing right now with the county, so with that app, I actually have a meeting tomorrow, but with that application, some projects will include. And so there, there, like drainage improvement projects, so the county's main focus right now is the watershed. And so bridgeways, drainage, like culverts and everything like that, um, I know one of the projects within Kennedy that we're focusing on off of a map that was provided by the San Antonio River Authority and then the Hundred Year Bloodlane. What we're doing is back over there on Sunnyside Drive, Blue Bonnet, coming in, and then also like coming into Escondido Creek, we're, we're trying to improve the drainage, so I, I'm sure most of y'all know, when it rains hard, it floods badly, so. And so that's a part of the county's application, um, and, and when talking with Langford, we, he, and, and talking with the county and the cities, eh, we feel like it might be stronger if each entity applies separately, but the county's application is already going to include projects in all four municipalities as well as outside in those unincorporated areas. Um, that, that's what the county's focusing on, but I know Cindy could probably break it down more on other things that the City of Kennedy could do, uh, besides those drainage improvement projects.
That's fine, I just didn't know if it was something specific that we had to do, but it sounds like it's not, so that's, that's a good thing.
And, and one thing, just to note it out for any citizen listening to this, it's a one percent match. So that's tiny, 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 and luckily, um, I believe, uh, as a, a resident of the City of Kennedy and as a city council member, one percent for that kind of funding, if, eh, we can figure out a way to make it work. Because that, that's a lot of, that application is fun.
Yeah, it sounds pretty minimal for what you actually will get.
Yeah.
Sounds good to me.
All righty then, I'm going to make a motion on Item Eight to take.
All righty then, I'm going to make a motion on item eight to take action in regard to selecting a grant administrator, uh, for the Texas General Land Office, GLO, Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Mitigation, uh, program and authorize city manager to enter into a professional service agreement for grant administration with selected firm. And we, if we're gonna select a firm, I would select, uh, make a motion that we use Langford for the firm.
And I'll second that.
Motion by Leslie, second by Cindy. Any other discussion? There's no other discussion, Amanda, please call row.
Councilor Breonis?
Yeah.
Councilor Wynn? Councilor Sines?
Yes.
Councilor Conna?
Yeah.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion pass. Item number nine, consideration and possible action in regard to the selection of an engineer for the Texas General Land Office, GLO, Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Mitigation, CDBG MIT program. Discussion?
Make a motion to consider item nine on the agenda.
I'll second. Second by Justin. Discussion? Presentation?
Um, okay, so now, uh, the program requires us, of course, to, uh, choose an engineering firm, uh, that we desire to actually spearhead all the engineering on this. Uh, we had, uh, three fondants, uh, let me see if I can read these names. Rakoits, Len Engineering and looks like, eh, DeSau and Associates. Um, anyway, uh, we reviewed them and DeSau and Len scored the highest. They actually had, uh, experience doing these type of, uh, this type of work. Um, and, uh, Rakoits came in pretty close. Uh, I personally have never worked with any one of these, uh, so these three firms are all completely new to me. Um, so I don't know if Ms. Metro has ever worked with any one of the three of them, uh, if she has a preference or if, uh, Councilor Meyer in the county has ever worked with any of them.
So, with the county, we've worked with Rakoits and you said, that's the last one that you said. Uh, Rakoits, Rakoits is great for smaller projects. Um, just keep that in mind, if, if it's, uh, eh, I would, eh, they're great with smaller projects. But DuSet offers and with the, uh, CDBG MIT grant that the county is doing, we went with DuSet because the, with amount of experience in engineers, um, we would have never been able to personally come up with sixty-seven million dollars of projects. Um, DuSet actually did all the backend work for us and then set it down and then we, we looked at all their proposals, what they wanted to do within the county, within the cities. And, um, actually, like I said, we have a meeting tomorrow with DuSet and Langford where we're gonna narrow down, finalize our application to get her ready for submission. Um, I, that second, uh, Len, I think you said Len Engineers. Um, I've never worked with them, I don't know, Cindy, uh, you might have worked with them in the past. I don't know if you can, uh, give any references on them or any of the other engineers?
Um, eh, eh, Rakoits, yes, we've worked with them before and yes, the smaller projects. And the other one, Len, I, I'm sorry, I, I'm not familiar with them. So, that's one I. I'm sorry? They're also known as Mercer, Mercer Engineering. Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. I, I have heard of Mercer before, but I have not worked with them personally.
Mercer's done work for the city of Kennedy in the past. Uh, correct, Amanda?
Yes.
Right, they don't allow the project in Kennedy. Uh, Rakoits, I've heard of them, they do, their work is, is good as well. Uh, between the two, it's, it's gonna be a pretty tough decision. I mean, they, their work is great. It's whoever the council wants to, to pick is gonna, or select is gonna take it. But Cindy, you said you worked with Rakoits but never worked with Mercer?
Um, Rakoits, I, 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 I know them, I have not worked with them personally. Um, but I know they have worked on, like Langford has worked on projects with them and Langford has worked with DuSet and Mercer, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, my question is, the two that scored the, that scored the best, one of them is the one that we're, one of them is one that we're, that we're aware of and the other one is the one, is one that we're not aware of at all. Um, so the Mercer one, is that the one that does small projects? Or is that one that has the ability to do the big projects?
So, Rakoits is the smaller firm, they're good engineers, but they, they, with my past history with them and I think Cindy might have some history with them as well. They typically do smaller, uh, infrastructure projects, they're still smart people. Uh, they don't have the team like the other two firms. So then Mercer would be the one, the one thing that's done work with the city of Kennedy before. And then DuSet is the other larger firm who's done work with the county. Um, I, my, my question to the council was, when you, um, when you started speaking up, we were thinking at the same time, is, are we looking at doing arch projects with the city of Kennedy? Are we looking at doing smaller projects?
Personally, I think we need to work toward the, getting the best bang for our bucks with. So I'd say we should look at some of the larger projects.
And I, I would agree, Leslie. Cindy, this, uh, this grant that we're speaking about right now, what's the max project that could be done with what we're talking about? In your, eh, what you.
Uh, that's a little bit wide open right now because that hasn't been narrowed down yet. When they give this money, they give it to the cogs and the counties and the state and they haven't broken it down, but it's a ton of money. Um, Justin, it, it's what, like two billion for the entire?
So what I was told, what I was told, it was a minimum of five million dollars in projects up to a hundred million. That was the last that I had heard when we were applying for the grant for the. So that, that, we, the county, we try to get as many projects as we possibly can find. So that's why our application sits at sixty-seven point six million dollars right now. Now, it might be narrowed down a little bit tomorrow where it might not be at that max capacity, uh, of sixty-seven point six. Um, but, if, Brandon, long story short, we're looking, i- i- if we can find projects and we can, and we can identify them, get the engineering done and propose it in the application, um, I don't, I don't think we'll find a hundred million dollars in projects in Kennedy, but maybe we could, that would be awesome if we did. Um, that's why, I, in my personal opinion, I think we need to look at a larger firm. Um, beca- because like, for example, with DuSet, they, like I said, they did all the backend work for us. You know, they went out and I, granted, I was the liaison between the county, San Antonio River Authority, um, and DuSet, but I got them all the information they needed. And then basically, I have a fo- three by four map in my office labeling all the projects that they, the county is going to apply for, where DuSet did everything. They looked at all the watershed, they looked at all the, the, the infrastructure on the county roads, the city roads and everything else. And so, I would, I would feel more comfortable going with a larger firm just because in, i- it's, it's a money-making business. They know the larger the project, the more money that they're gonna make. Um, so they're more active to find and use, use their, eh, software and systems and data and everything else to find those projects, identify them and help us out who, you know, don't have as much experience in identifying these projects.
Do you think it would be, uh, a cl- a, a challenge for the firm that the county's using if we asked them to represent us also?
I don't think so because DuSet currently is already aware of all the, eh, well, DuSet is very familiar with Carntons County because of, we've been working on this application for about a month and a half to two months now. So they're very familiar with the county, um, and the, and the, the watershed, the drainage. But even like, I know if we, like Cindy was saying, if we wanna look at the sewer plant or anything else, but their team is huge, they're all over Texas, um, they have multiple engineers. Collins Label is actually the engineer that I work with, eh, almost a day-to-day basis. Anytime he has, I get him the information, we work together. Um, we have bi-weekly meetings, um, where we get on a conference call with Langford and DuSet. Um, I have a good working history with them, uh, I have a good working history with Rakoits. Uh, Mercer, I don't, but I do know that they've done work in Kennedy. So it, it really is gonna be a council's decision. I think Mr. Len was saying that both Mercer and DuSet scored the highest. Um, and I think if we're, we, we really should go look at those two. So it's really gonna be the, the council's decision, which one out of the two to go for it.
Justin, cause you worked with DuSet before, I think we should go with them since you have a really good history with them.
I agree.
I agree.
I do too.
This is what, this is, he's got the knowledge of them and, I mean, if Justin feels, Justin feels that way, I think we should go with, with that, he's got the experience working with these, these people, so. What do you, what do you think, wha- what do you say, Justin? No, I mean, I agree, but I, once again, I don't wanna sound biased, I just, I work a lot with these administrators and engineers and I, and like I said, even Rakoits, I'm, they are good engineers. I just think if we're trying to do large projects and tackle a lot of things and get a really good, strong application, we should, um, try to get maybe someone that has multiple engineers with the amount of knowledge. Um, and if, if y'all are comfortable with DuSet, I'm comfortable saying that they have been great engineers to work with, just like Langford. Langford's been great grant administrators to work with as well.
Well, I'm so.
I'm good with that.
Yep, if somebody wants to make a motion. Uh, go on.
All right, I make a motion that we pick, uh, DuSet for the engineering company, uh, uh, to do our, uh, grant project for number nine on our agenda.
I'll second that. Second by Leslie. Discussion? There's no other discussion, Amanda, please call row.
Councilor Breonis?
Yeah.
Councilor Wynn?
Yeah.
Councilor Sines?
Yes.
Councilor Conna?
Yeah.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion pass. Moving on to item number ten, consideration of possible action in regard to the acceptance of the city of Kennedy's two thousand nineteen annual financial report prepared by Bayer and Company, DPAs. Discussion?
I make a motion that we consider item number ten on.
I'll second it.
I'll second that, this is Cindy.
Uh, Cindy, taken by Cindy? Discussion?
Okay, discussion, and now, I, I understand that Mr. Bayer is on the phone?
Yes.
Yes.
Can you? Mr. Bayer, are you there?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, and, uh, city manager Len, you had, ha- you said there was a concern that you had on, uh, uh, on the audit, can you share that?
Uh, yes, um, the, uh, the concern that I had with the audit, Mr. Bayer and I had already spoken about today and I know that he was going to address it in his presentation, uh, but since I've been asked, uh, we had to, um, typically, an auditor will do the audit and then if there's any, uh, adjustments that need to be made, they send it, you review it, uh, they ask you to sign off on it. Um, and when Mr. Bayer followed those procedures, the dollar a month that I was being asked to sign off on, uh, was well outside of my comfortable level threshold. Um, we were asked to sign off on about five million dollars worth of adjustments, uh, to our books. Um, I did get Mr. Bayer on the phone, he and I talked through it, I expressed my concerns with him about it. Uh, these adjustments, essentially what they boiled down to, and again, Mr. Bayer, when he presents, he'll touch on this, but the short story is, uh, we did projects, uh, in the, in the fiscal year with, which we were audited for and those projects were in funds and they were, uh, asset-type projects that carried deple- uh, depreciation with them. And Mr. Bayer needed to properly allocate those to the fund where it needed to be depreciated in. And the only way he could do that was more or less, uh, just to pick it up out of that fund and drop it into another fund and us make an adjusting journal entry. So, it was just a matter of reallocation, uh, to the proper fund uh, so that we could gather the depreciation in the right fund on these, uh, assets that we have. So, eh, while it wasn't exorbitant amount, uh, there was nothing really significant as far as anything that raised a concern with the auditor, um, as far as any misdeeds or anything that he and I discussed, so. Um, and that was my measure.
All right, now, Mr. Bayer, can you give us, uh, a overall generalization of where we're at as a city and how our audit looks? I went through the audit and it says a lot, but it, I need it broken down in, in, uh, layman terms and our citizens need it broken down in layman's terms also.
Okay, uh, first I wanna say that, uh, Mr. Len, you are a very good listener. You could see, that, you could say exactly what I was just gonna say regarding our discussion this afternoon. Uh, as far as the financial condition of the city, the city is in excellent financial condition. Excellent.
Okay. Fantastic.
Did you want me to go on?
Well, that, you know, that, that's in a nutshell, that sounds good to me. If there's some other information that other council individuals that I'd like to have, uh, you guys can ask whatever you wanna ask, but that was kinda where I wanted to know, at the end of the day, have we done a good job managing our money and are we moving in the right direction?
Extremely good. The city, in my view, as an outsider, the city is an excellent budgeter. The city, um, passes good, strong budgets where there, you know, basically, um, um, balance. And the city stays within, on expenditures, the city stays within their expenditure, um, their expenditure amounts, they're excellent, excellent budgeting. The city's excellent at budgeting.
Great, great. Now, there, uh, there was another concern, there's a, there's a letter that has to be signed off by the mayor. Can we have that signed off by the mayor pro temp and still have everything in order?
Yes, that, that's a, that's a representation letter?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Len? Yes, uh, the mayor pro temp can sign that, yeah, that'd be, it would be very valid, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Bayer, when you did this audit, did you, was there anything out of the ordinary that caught your eye that you feel that Kennedy should work on harder or strive, strive to reach?
Yes, yes, I, I think, and I'm not sure what the city's, um, plans are with respect to, there is a, uh, there's this lady, I guess, that the city, uh, retained to help get the books ready to be audited. Um, my, my, um, suggestion is for the city to retain this lady, you know, just retain her, I'm just, she, she can work one day a week or five days a month or whatever is, is she or whomever you would get would be comfortable. Uh, I thought she, she does very good, I think she does very good work. Um, but I would, um, get her. Um, but I would, um, get her and keep her and then a subset, a subset of that, she would know, see, one of the problems with, um, with Kennedy as in a lot of cities, is keeping these, uh, accounts reconciled. In other words, uh, these due to and due from between funds, you're keeping those reconciled and reconciling dissolidated cash with the fund. Um, this overall, uh, keeping the books very, very clean. And I think she came in and she did that. You know, there was nothing untoward, um, that anybody was doing, um, you know, that would, um, you know, like, seep or anything like that, it's just that the books were not kept in a clean manner. And this lady did that.
Good.
Oh, that's what I would hu- recommend, is you retain her. She'll do all these things, she'll do all these things that auditors look for, you know, in, in audit clients.
Alright.
Aman- Amanda, this is Cindy, is she still coming in?
Uh, yes, Judy is, um, she is, she de- she decided to come back to the city when we asked her to come back to help and file the books and so she's with the city now. She comes and files out once a week like Mr. Bayer said.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure that she was still with us.
Yes, she is.
Okay.
Yeah, I might add, um, and that, you know, you're, you're, you'd be getting all these grants and that, um, they will be looking at this, you know, they'll be looking at things. Um, you have somebody in the city that can keep the books clean. It's a very, very important, important item with these, these grant people. Probably like the state, federal government and the state government.
So does anybody else have any questions? If not, I'm going to make a motion that we accept the, uh, audit for the city of Kennedy two thousand nineteen financial report prepared by Bayer and Company, CPA.
I got a motion by Leslie?
Leslie, do you wanna add to, um, allow the mayor pro temp to sign any documents?
Yes, ma'am, and I'll, I'll add that, uh, have the mayor pro temp to sign any documents concerning this that needs to be signed.
I'll still second it. Second by Justin? Discussion? If there's no other discussion, Amanda, please call row?
Councilor Brianna?
Yeah.
Councilor Lynn?
Yes.
Councilor Stein?
Yes.
Councilor Conno?
Yes.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passed. item eleven.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Leslie? I'll second it. Second by Justin, everybody? He's done, have a good night, see y'all back on Thursday, you have a good one, take care, everybody, great job.